Okay. This is the October 14th, 2021 meeting of the Monmouth Planning Board. And in the meeting room in Monmouth, we have Ray Simon, Dave Mills, Rick Grant, Larry Socia, and myself, Stephen O'Donnell. And two members aren't able to be here tonight. John Davinsky is on vacation and out of town. Mike Seer has been dealing with some illness, so he is not here, but we have the two alternates who will be voting members tonight. I know we have some people here by Zoom. I saw Norm Chamberlain representing Kipewa or camp group, but I think I saw Billy Hope. Is there anyone else from Kipewa who's here? Can you hear me online there? Are we muted?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Chair O'Donnell, Bill Walsh here from Walsh Engineering, and we do have Bart Markheim as well here. And as you said, Billy, Billy Hodge is here. Norm Chamberlain is assisting me as well.
All right. Good. 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 All right. We'll get, we'll get the meeting. I'm calling the meeting then to order. We have minutes from our last meeting, which I, can we pass those on and get into the business part of the meeting?
Business part of the meeting.
Okay. Old business, we have no old business pending. I do, I haven't yet issued the decision on the subdivision I just got that we approved last month. I, I had the other two, which I have done. I'll try to get that one done soon, but we have really no old business. For new business, we have Walsh Engineering has submitted an application for the camp group which operates Camp Kipewa. And they are applying for approval both under the shoreline zoning and under our site review. So before we get started, I just want to kind of address the issue of filing fees. From the many of you know that previously Camp Group had applied for approval both under site review and subdivision and withdrew that application. And we are holding some escrow funds. Off the top of my head, I think it's about $148.
$287.
$287? Oh, good. Thank you. Also here with us is Matt Gross, who's the code enforcement officer from Monmouth and Libby Bertrand is taking minutes. I apologize for not introducing them. So the filing fees for shore land would be a a fee of $50. We have not been adding the additional fee for construction costs because we figure that gets captured at the time a building permit is applied for. And the site plan review for major development would be $350. So with the applicant's permission, we would apply what we have in the escrow to the filing fee and then ask you to send the town a check for the difference.
The, I'll jump in here. The applicant has included a check for $600 as part of this application.
Okay.
Which we have.
All right.
Not yet deposited until a resolution is decided here.
Right.
We will do so and then
Okay.
settle the
And, and we can have maybe this discussion sort of later as we discuss this project because there's going to be some requirements for notice to a butters. If the applicant takes care of that, then we don't have to worry about the cost in terms of escrow, but a butters have to be notified by certified mail and certain town officials, which we can handle internally. So we can discuss that at some point. But with that, we'll turn it over to the applicant to just give us a or maybe I'll say preliminarily here tonight, you know, this is the initial meeting, although you've been here before, we really are treating this as a as a new application and really as if you never applied before in terms of having you describe this project and the planning board undertaking the review. So typically at this initial meeting, we have you describe the project. Members may have questions. We may take some questions from the public if there is some. You know, we're not really getting into the issues of approval at this point. This is really just to acknowledge we've got this application and accept it. And, and then decide how we're going to be proceeding with this over the next few meetings. But with that, I don't know who wants to take the lead for the applicant and kind of give us an overview of, of what is proposed?
Absolutely. Chair O'Donnell, again, Bill Walsh from Walsh Engineering. I'd like to also introduce some Steve and Ginger Claire who came in after we started here. So they, they're part of the camp group and actually the the onsite directors of Camp Kipewa. So you've got the team here and we're happy to be in front of you. Appreciate everybody taking the time. If I can hopefully share my screen. I don't know if I can or not here.
Have to give him permission, maybe?
I don't know.
Don't see it.
I don't see it as an option on our screen.
I'm, I'm not sure that it is.
You might have to make him a
Yeah, it's a good call.
Make him a co- Is there a way to do that? Make him a co- co-host?
But we can't even screen here.
Really?
I don't see that as an option.
That's supposed to be
Mr. Walsh, do you now see the option?
I don't.
You know?
I got security that just popped up, but I do not. Just looking through the things here. No, I've got participants stopped and paused recording and apps, so. I mean, I can certainly talk through it if the board wants to look at the plan. I can certainly talk through it that way.
Yeah, we have a paper copy here. I mean, it's something we need to look. This is the second meeting that we've used this system and probably the first time.
Yeah.
We've had to it's something we need to look into, I guess.
It's probably just in the settings when we set up the meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think that's true.
Yeah.
Bill, it does show you as a co-host, but you don't see the, the ability there?
I do not see it. I have participants.
Because we're not even seeing here that we have the ability to share documents.
Yeah, I think we would have to like end the meeting and send out a new link to do it. So that's not really an option.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly, let me just pull up a plan so I know what I'm talking about. I had a call, I have a colored rendering, but I think if I can get the board to look at I'm going to say Plan C 2.0 is probably the best one to, to start with.
So for anyone that's watching from home, the material, the application is on the website of the town. And if you go to the town calendar for today and click on the planning board and the planning board packet will show this this plan and all the other materials. So these are not the survey documents. There's something
They should be sheet, it should say on the bottom rate, C 2.0.
Look at the Yeah, this guy.
This corner here. Okay.
Yeah, 2.0.
Okay, there we go.
Does that one work?
That one works.
All right. I think that's a good, I think that's a good one that I can use. That's essentially the, the plan that I have rendered up, but we can, we can talk through it this way just fine. So again, I'm, I'm Bill Walsh with Walsh Engineering and Norm Chamberlain's here with me as well as everybody that we talked about from the camp group. And what the camp group is proposing is an expansion of Camp Kipewa on a parcel that's about 19 and a half acres to the, to the north of the existing camp primarily. And as I'm sure you all know, we went through a process of of a zone change here for the, for the shoreline zone section of this. And, and as you know, that was on June 8th, it was an amendment to the zoning for, to allow this project to go forward down within the shoreline zone. So it's the area, and I'm not sure if you have color on your drawing, but the, the shoreline zone is 250 feet from the lake, which is the, the area, the lake is at the bottom of that sheet and on the 250 feet extends up to a, on my plan, it's a green line. And I don't know if you've got colored drawings or not, but it's a green line. The blue line on that plan is a, is a hundred foot setback from the lake. So that's the setback from the lake backwards, which we are, which we are not touching that space. So that the zone change that was proposed and, and changed by the town was a, was a special zone and it was geared around the idea of protecting the lake. And what it does is it, it puts even stricter zoning requirements within the shoreline zone in the amount that can be developed in that area. Roads within that space must be paved. And we also have to meet the main stormwater chapter 500 requirements for, for, for stormwater discharge, which are actually more stringent than what's, what's typically required. So that was geared towards that. And the idea was, was certainly to protect the lake. The other idea here, I guess, the grander idea of the, of the camp itself was to provide an expansion of the camp that serves young girls. And it, it's intended to be kind of cabins in the wood, in the woods themselves. So it's really intended to be sort of a light touch in, on the landscape. All buildings will be, and I'll talk about this a little bit more, but buildings will kind of be elevated a little bit on piers. So ground disturbance will be, will be a minimum in that space in particular. So really trying to get them somewhat close to the lake, but also be very, very sensitive to the lake and what's happening there. So the existing property owned by, by the camp group, if you will, it's, is is about 96 acres of overall property. And as I said, what's being proposed is on about a 19 and a half acre parcel that is north of that existing one, which is the, the part that you're looking at there on that plan. The existing parcel does have a cottage down on the, I'll say the lower left down by the lake, as you look at that plan and the garage structure that's just up above that, along that, it's in that little triangle shaped area, I'll say on the lower left hand side. And there is a drive that comes down from the camp, from the Kipewa camp down into that, into that cottage. The, the proposed plan, again, within that recreation business and lake district is, is primarily on what I'm going to call lot 30, which is the plan you're looking at. The area to the left is lot what we're calling lot 29, and those, those are tax map lot numbers just for reference. And within this, I'm going to start down by the lake, down at the, I'll say at the bottom. And within that space, we're going to propose five camper cabins that are zooming myself a little bit here. They're labeled one, two, three, four, and five. Two staff cabins, which would be smaller cabins just for the staff and a small campfire area that's off to the, I'll say the left side of the property for the kids to gather in the evenings. The cabins themselves would be about 36 by 50 feet long, those cabins. And the staff cabins will be about 20 feet by 30 feet. There is a
If I could interrupt, you kind of cut out when you gave the dimensions of the cabins. What are they again?
Sure, they, they, the camper cabins are 36 by 50 feet and the staff cabins are about 20 feet by 30 feet.
Thank you.
So the, the staff are obviously a little bit smaller. There are some walking trails that are proposed in this space. We have one that comes, I'm going to say from the access drive that's up on the top and runs down to a proposed seasonal dock down on the lake. And then obviously we have paths that, that come down and access each of the, the cabins. So moving just westerly of that shoreline zone into, into the space that's above that is is a new access drive that, that's that sort of stippled dotted drive that runs through there, goes up and turns and circles back around to the left, kind of traverses through the site in different places. Primarily, the access drives on this site obviously are for sort of minimal use and also for emergency vehicles. So we're trying to make sure that emergency vehicles could get down to these cabins, should that, should that be necessary? And we've looped it up and around through back into the space as you go up the page or look up the page into the, the larger area up there. So there is a, there is a wetland crossing that's happening across that, this large wetland that bisects it kind of left to right as you're looking at it or south to north is the other way to say that. So there is the, the stippled area to the right is a driveway and then there's a, a elevated boardwalk that will be more for just pedestrian traffic that will run through that wetland as well. Both of those, just you, you have this in your packet, but both of those have been permitted by the main DEP already through the NRPA process. So they've been, they've been looked at hard by the, by the DEP and they did approve that as well. So moving up the page, I'll say we have this, this sort of loop road, I'll call it, that runs, connects to the existing road on the left-hand side. And then loops up and around up towards the, the top of the page to the, I'm going to call it towards the racetrack or the horse track up on the, on the top of the page where you're seeing that sort of semi-circular track up on the top. The road goes up towards that and then, and then connects out towards the north or to the right of the page as you look at it. And again, for emergency vehicles. So we have two forms of egress into the site to allow emergency vehicles to get in and out. So that's the road system. And the upper area really is the, I guess I'll call it the heart of the, of the sort of activity center. And there are several buildings that are proposed in there. There's a general purpose building, art studio. I think there's a cooking studio, health center, a dance and gym building. And off to the right are a couple of, a few tennis courts and a basketball court, as well as way off to the far right are some additional staff cabins off to that right-hand side. So that's primarily the, the majority of the development, except for the area to the left, I'll say back to lot 29, which is really the existing camp. I'll say camp proper as it exists today. There's a new office proposed there and also an expansion to the existing dining room. So those two, the, the dining hall will be used for the, for the kids that come to the new camp and it will combine with the existing dining room up in that space. There's a few just up on the upper left-hand part of the, of the image as you look at it, there's a little bit of gravel parking and some driveways there just to access the office and some removal of existing gravel up in that space, great existing gravel parking or I should say drive parking areas that'll be removed and replaced with a more formal parking area up there. For stormwater, we have submitted to the main DEP and received approval for the stormwater on the site. We have met chapter 500 and, and met the requirements of the main DEP for that. The again, the area down by the lake, we are going to use a few sort of special treatment systems. Every cabin down there will have what we call a drip line filter. And what those drip line filters are, are, are infiltration areas that are designed and engineered to treat runoff that comes off of the roof area. And it will, the water will fall into that. It'll infiltrate into the ground. It's then collected in a pipe. Once it's treated through that, it's collected in a pipe and discharged back out to the surface. When it gets back out to the surface, it will be put into a level spreader so that it, it she flows out across the forest before reaching the lake. So we've, we've done everything we can to try to treat that runoff to the best of our abilities before it discharges into the lake. We did also send, we, we, Bill Monigal was involved with us with the the zone change. He's seen a lot of our, our work and what we were done. And we talked at great length with him about this during the zone change. We have also sent the plans, the DEP permit, all of that information to Bill for his review as well. For erosion controls, we've done a very rigorous erosion control plan and that, that is included within the plan set. Obviously the idea is to try to protect the, to not try, but to protect the lake to the extent that to, to the every possible extent that we can. So there's a, there's a really rigorous plan that the contractor will have to follow in order to provide any provide protection from any erosion that might occur on the site. We do have utilities proposed here and those are going to be relatively simple, but we will have underground electrical systems. So the electrical service that runs in and services the cabins and, and all of the buildings in here will be brought underground in conduit. The lighting that is proposed is relatively minimal. You know, it's sort of wayfinding lighting, I'll call it on the site so that it doesn't, you know, light it up real well, but it lights it up enough so that you know, staff and, and kids can find their way if they need to in the dark. So there are a few, I'll call them streetlights at the intersections of the roadways. And then there are smaller bollard lights that will run along primarily along the path and the boardwalk that runs through the, through the center of it of the, of the wetland space there. So that will light that up from the cabins kind of back to the, the central area up above. And then for septic systems, we have, you'll see on the plans, a series of leach fields that show some of them are on the, I'll say the right or the northern side of the site for cabins one through six and the staff units that are, that are down on the, on the bottom half of the property. Those leach fields will collect the, the septicage that comes from these cabins that is pumped up to them. So we've taken it up and out of the shoreline zone where those leach fields will be. We will have obviously have tanks and pumps down by the cabin cells, but they'll all be pumped up above to the leach fields. And then up above, there are a few leach fields up there as well to service the different facilities that exist up there. And there's, there's two of them that are up by the recreational field. And then there is one over by the staff housing as well. So I think, um, I think I've covered pretty much the plan and would certainly be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
What, what's the source of drinking water?
Drinking water now, Ginger and Steve, I'm going to actually let Steve maybe answer that one. He knows that site well.
Hello, yeah, the Kipewa property currently uses a surface water system drawn from the lake chlorinated and filtered. We would be hoping to move to a well, but we have not explored that yet. We obviously have the means to use the current surface water system. And then maybe as we grow, look at the need for the well.
You pump that, by pump must come out by a pump to
Yeah, it pumps up and is treated and chlorinated, chlorinated and filtered and then goes up to a storage tank and then is gravity fed back down.
You have to get some kind of testing approval from
Yeah, that's one of the main reasons I'd like to move to a well system because it's very time consuming and and hard work. But yes, it is monitored by the state and we're a public drinking source.
Yeah.
We, we actually do have a well onsite as well for the, for the cottage that is currently there, but that's not big enough to serve the, this planned development.
So currently, I mean, you're talking about a new access road that's going to come up, say by where the former race course was, horse track.
Yeah, it's, it's actually an existing road that goes up there that, that it, that we're connecting into. It's back behind the horse barns there that that will connect into and extends out to the public road.
Any other users of that other than the camp group?
I think it's just the camp group, but I'm going to go back to Ginger and Steve again on that one, just to be sure.
Yeah, no, that is just our, our property.
Anyone else here have some?
I just got a question. 94 acres total property. How many acres that we get to develop? What was that number again?
So the, the, the parcel that, it's about 19 and a half is the, is the entire parcel that, you know, is primarily the development. Obviously there's the office and the dining hall that are just off to the left of that parcel. So I'm going to say roughly it's, you know, all, all in all, it's about a 20 acre parcel when you include that. But that's not all developed. That's, you know, it's primarily, I think it's, it's much less than that. That's actually developed.
David, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a number of them. I don't know. Go ahead. The application states that the LLC also contemplates additional development on the property. Could you kind of enlighten us as to what that may entail?
At this point, I think this is the extent of it right now.
Under the shoreline zoning ordinance, number nine also, it says, construction of the summer camp includes staff cabins, residential cabins, pathways, amenities and a seasonal dock. And I see the seasonal dock appears on the plan here and that. Is there any? So there's just a dock system. There's no provision for potential beach area for swimming in that?
No, I don't think we can down there. Any swimming I think would be, would be from the dock. If, if there is swimming there, that's really the purpose of it. And I think there is beach to the it's to the south, I guess, on the existing camp that they would, that they would utilize.
And in the development description and project overview, it says that the intent, the intent of the camp expansion is to provide alternative programming and session durations to serve additional markets and prospective campers. What is the norm, what is the proposed normal length of the sessions and like, do they go from a Tuesday to a Thursday? Do they go from a Saturday to a Sunday? Well, what is that?
Ginger? Yeah. Hi, everybody. I'll take that. So I don't actually know the exact days of the week. We haven't quite gotten that nitty gritty yet, but we are looking at doing two weeks. And potentially one week. So kind of two week, one week, two week.
So would it be from a Sunday to a Saturday type thing?
Well, our current, currently we start on a Thursday. Well, our current currently, we start on a Thursday and finish on a Sunday. And then the second session starts on a Wednesday and finishes on Saturday, so it would be similar. As much as possible, we would align those travel days, you know, for our for everybody's sake to avoid people in and out as much as possible, so. Similar days, but I don't know exactly, you know, which days of the week it would be. We haven't quite laid that out.
Well, under the traffic conditions, it says that the pro- proposed development will not cause any unreasonable congestions or unsafe conditions on the existing roadways. Um I think as you realize, Route one thirty-five is not a major thoroughfare. And usually with the influx of summer residents and that. Along with construction vehicles and other things like that. It could provide, especially on a weekend, some severe congestion to there. Have you done any type of a traffic study to actually substantiate uh that statement?
We haven't, we haven't done a traffic study, but what we have done, as I said, we've got, we now have two entrances, one entrance, one exit. However, you want to look at that from the from the camp, which we don't have presently have. So the idea and what has been discussed as a team is to be able to bring the cars into the site. And and get them within the site and off of the public roads, you know, as quickly as possible and move them out um. In one exit entrance and out the out the other way through the through the exit. So we feel that that makes a pretty smooth, um I guess, movement of traffic through the site. And there's certainly enough road system and parking area within the site to to park any cars that come in through there.
I I can also say we do um utilize, you know, buses. So it isn't all car traffic, like it isn't all parents coming in in individual vehicles. We do buses and vans and stuff to bring the kids. In groups from other locations too.
It's one thirty-five, especially on weekends and that. It's not only. More congested due to the seasonal residents here, but also there's a substantial number of people. That use that route to access the Monmouth boat launch, both to and from. So there can be quite a bit of traffic in that particular area.
When we when we first met with the neighbors, um that was some feedback that we got um three years ago now uh. On that initial meeting and we actually looked at our our systems and decided that there was a better way we could alleviate that. So we used to actually tell parents to wait at the gate on on those pickup days until we were ready. We realized they are always going to come early now, so now we let them all the way down onto camp and there's there's no one parked on the road anymore. Uh so we've changed our system since that we got that feedback. We're pretty confident we can get everyone in, uh as Bill said, on the property without having to uh be on one thirty-five.
So at some point in time, are you guys going to do a traffic study to determine if that's feasible?
Uh we haven't, but.
That's one of the things we can require. If that need seems to be, you know, if we if we look at the. Um submission requirements. And depending on the number of campers, there's usually not. Unless they're going to a central location and putting my boss and bring them in multiples at a time. Um there's usually one or two campers per vehicle coming in and out, so if you have. A hundred campers, you could have possibly seventy-five additional vehicles coming and leaving within a short period of time. Which, like I said, would, if it's on a weekend, there's substantial traffic there with boat. People pulling their boats in in and out. And it's 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 not really a major commercial road.
As hello, everyone, as Ginger indicated, um I know you had just said one to three campers per vehicle. You know, we charter anywhere from fifty to fifty-five passenger buses. So just to, you know, do the numbers, if you just have two buses, you're already at a hundred. So um our main form of transportation is charter buses.
To bring the campers into the site and then also the exit though?
Yes.
So you so you bring them to us to some other location like the Augusta Airport or something and then bus them in?
Um we do pickups like in Boston and in New York and Connecticut and stuff. A lot of our kids are coming from. You know, other locations throughout the northeast, so. Help the the parents not do um two trips back and forth to Maine, so.
You have other questions, Dave, at this point?
I'm done with my list.
Ray, do you have?
Yeah, the only thing I was curious about was going back to lighting. Uh I noticed staff cabins are going to be near the property line, so. I would assume lighting will be controlled pretty good by staff.
Yes.
Going to be minimal lighting around his staff cabins.
Yeah, I think around the staff cabins, we're pretty, we're pretty light um on that. And it would primarily just be at the, you know, at the entrances like you would have on a on a residential home. You would have something at the at the steps where you enter into the cabin.
I did miss one thing, Steve.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, anyway, the in the review criteria, you said that the fire protection can be provided from the nearby lake. Are you going to provide a dry hydrant somewhere close to where a emergency vehicle could attach?
Steve, do you know, do you have a dry hydrant down there now?
I I don't know what a dry hydrant is, so.
Oh, sorry. It's a it's a uh it's a hydrant that would extend into the lake that they can draw off of, that they can, um the fire trucks can get um. Water from pull water from the lake.
I know we don't have that, but I've had the fire department on the property uh lot before. They've actually come in and sprayed the kids down on hot days and things like that. They parked the truck right beside the lake and threw a hose in the water and it was it, so. Um you know, they can park with currently at Kipwar anyway, they can park twenty fifteen to feet from the lake, maybe, so hasn't been an issue.
Otherwise, the nearest uh access to water would probably be opposite on one road where there is a dry hydrant and they'd have to tanker truck it up. So. That might be something you want to consider.
Okay.
So, you know, I just want to bring up what. Kind of follow up on what um. Dave Mills mentioned and, you know, just looking at. On page twenty-nine of our ordinance, submission items related to particular circumstances. And under six four three, six point four point three point two. Does indicate in certain situations, the traffic study. Or impact analysis report shall be prepared. When the road use evaluation. Indicates a traffic generation of greater than one hundred trips. During the peak hour of the day. So I'm not quite sure that, well, I don't think it's gonna fall trigger that automatic. But, you know, this may raise issues of. Additional signage on the road. That maybe warns people that. There could be additional traffic at certain times or, you know, warning. System light that comes on during the period of. Um transport, I don't know. I mean, it's something to, I think, consider as we go forward.
Just for, just sorry, if I may ask, what is considered that peak hour of the day, just sort of from my own knowledge?
I I think that we'd want to see where the where the roads are coming out because there's a line of sight issue too. Possibly, possibly.
Right.
Peak hour day, that's probably talks about, you know, the traffic between seven A M and six P M.
Right, like the commuter hours.
Yeah, you know, general commuter hours.
Yeah, that's generally what it is. It's sort of peak hour of the road system. Um so there is one that that happens for that. Some days during the week and some some days during the weekend, so.
And I'm sure there's going to be discussion of, see, at this point, I mean, we we have published on our website that that. We have received your application, but, you know, the notices to abutters and any publication. In any newspaper hasn't been put out yet. Um. So this issue may come out again from members of the public, but I. I seem to recall that there was concern when you really only had the one access uh point. That at particular weekends, there seemed to be more of an issue um with traffic, but. So it's it's something to look at. I don't know that the. I don't think the standard for a required report is there, but I think we'll just have to kind of. See our way through this.
It uh also just, it could remind me.
No, go ahead.
And you you brought up the um. Uh the line of sight, perhaps. There may very well be, you may choose to require, obviously, the D O T to permit the exit as an entrance. A road entry uh and the line of sight will be addressed there. Obviously, there's an existing entry that wouldn't apply, but additional signage may help with that. It may be a little blind.
Yeah, so at some point, maybe they want to stake out where the road is, they propose the road to come out.
Which may exist.
It exists. It does exist.
Oh, yeah, I this may be triggering a change of use from the D O T's perspective in a one site.
So I think the access is right across almost from, is it rising? What's the name of the bed and breakfast? On the opposite side of one thirty-five and the axis is almost across, not quite across from it, I believe, but.
Yeah, it is. As you said, it is. And I would say it's, we do utilize it, but right, it is not currently signposted as. Camp Kipwar. You know, it's it has racetrack drive, like it has the name of the road, not as a.
So there may be some something that D O T needs to look at for that. I think that's a good point, Matt. The the other thing, the point that David raised on. Fire protection is that um. This project is going to require that we get comments from the town fire chief and. So I I assume that he'll review this and make, you know, recommendations. I mean, the concern is, you know, access and. To not only the fire truck, safety vehicles and, you know, being able to put out a fire quickly if there.
The town, the the town does have access to other towns supporting them and that, but if they had to use the dry hydrant on Sanborn Road, which I believe is the nearest one. They'd have to ferry tankers back and forth, which could be problematic.
Yeah, so that's going to be something that gets looked at. Okay, so at this point, you're not requiring any waivers of submission requirements. Is that? Corrected?
Um sorry, I don't think we do have any at this point.
Yeah, I didn't see anything in in there. Um. So I think at this point, we can entertain a motion to accept the application.
I make a motion to accept the application.
Second by Larry. Okay, second by Ray Simon. Any discussion on accepting? Okay, all in favor? So for me, from that point on, we have to at some point determine. That it's complete, you know, we may be requiring some additional information. Um but I think at this point, what I'd like to do is. Talk about um. A site visit. And typically what we do is we put that in the notice that goes out. To the abutters and other interested parties. Um it looks like our November meeting. Would probably, and we'll have to talk about this, but the eleventh, which is our normal day, is a holiday. So we, I'm thinking we should move our meeting until the next meeting till the eighteenth of November. And I'm wondering, you know, to give adequate notice. To maybe do a site visit on November fourth at four P M. Um could be a Thursday night and do it at four, so we make sure we got enough light. And I think that would be. You know, that would give us enough time to make sure notices get out. Everyone okay with that? Okay. Um. Are you folks willing to do the notification to the abutters?
We can certainly take care of that if that's helpful.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. We can develop the notice that would just out. Matt and I will work on that and get it.
Okay. Yep.
Um. We'll have to double check the butter list just to make sure. And and I think we've got to notify um. Fire chief, the police chief. School isn't relevant. Um I don't know if there's anybody else. Cobbsy Watershed has been notified. So we'll get working on those notices and, you know, have the site visit and then I think then we can have some. Further discussion at the November meeting. Um. I guess I'd like to get some input from the community at large before we. You know, kind of determine whether there's going to be additional information, but you may want to look in. You know, if you look into the D O T requirements. For that drive between now and the next meeting, that might kind of save some time.
Yep, we can, we can certainly do that.
And I think it would be good if you could kind of give us. Maybe a written statement of how you handle. Kind of the traffic in and out generally. I mean, I'm assuming. A lot of your staff are there and you have a lot of, I mean, do the, how many of your counselors have their own vehicle? Most. Do some?
No, like maybe a quarter, some, but yeah, out of, you know. Maybe there's international and people coming from all over.
Yeah, you know, maybe if you gave us kind of a a summary of sort of the normal. Daily use. That kind of existed over the last couple of seasons, you know, how many? People you have coming in and out. And also, um. You know, whether you have, you know, food people coming in and out. You know, maybe how many trips a week? You think you generate currently as you operate? And then how many? Additional trips you think there are going to be with this expansion? Um and then generally how you deal with, you know. Delivery of the kids, just as you've kind of outlined orally, but I think if you could kind of give us, if that wouldn't be. Too much to ask, I think that would give us some some data, you know, and. And also if we look at any D O T site line issues, um I think the ordinance has some kind of standard on. On sightlines, um. But I'm trying to remember. I mean, my sort of recollection is from your new entrance, you've got much better sightlines than you might have. From the old road, just because of the way that old road connects to one thirty-five. Well, this certainly would be a benefit to have that additional road, I think.
Yeah, I think that was. I think that was our assessment as well.
Yeah.
Were you thinking of possibly doing a vehicle count at the uh exit entrance?
Well, you know, now we're past the season, so I don't know, you know, it's kind of too late to have. Um, I mean, I drive, I drive one thirty-five pretty regularly. And um. But, you know, I I kind of, in my experience, is minimal, but I could see at certain times. And I know at the last. Kind of go around we had on your prior one, you know, a couple of people commented on the parents. On the parents weekend that. Obviously, there's more traffic and it sounds like you've tried to address that by. Having people come in. And maybe by having that additional parking area that's gonna. You know, help keep the pet traffic within.
Yeah, I think traffic flow was truly the issue that I heard from, you know, from the butters and and being able to move that through. The site much more efficiently is going to make this a much better situation. Obviously. Ginger and and Steve have already tried to address it, even with the existing facility.
And I know some, you know, some businesses or entities, when they have some special event. They have staff. Kind of help direct traffic in and out and. You know, that may be another way. You know, something for you to think about whether whether that makes. You know, any sense to have people there on particular weekends that are. Making sure that, you know, an unsafe condition doesn't. Isn't created.
Yep, we actually do have always done that and we act this since that neighborhood meeting, we have added. Because I think part of it was the Howard Drive. They felt like they sometimes lost that. View, so we added another person over there at Howard Drive, so. Kind of try to address getting more people into camp as opposed to on the roadway, and we did add more people up there, but we can put that in as well. You know, if we kind of look at, like you said, our daily usage, what that looks like and how we manage it currently.
Maybe what we should do at this point, it's just. I'm taking up the fee. You took a fee for six hundred. You know, I think we just got to keep a handle on. On any kind of cost. I I think. You know, this is generating the past some significant interest and so. We may put a notice in the. Community newspaper. Or or something and and, you know, as I say, we still have that escrow, so maybe. At this point, we'll take the fee, you know, we'll give you an accounting. But it's safer, I think, at this point, maybe to hang on to to we. We kind of see, but if you pick up the mailing, that's gonna. Obviate the need for us to get more. I think more funds. Matt, do you have the D E P approval? Did that come in? I know the application did. Is is all the D E P approval? Complete now?
Yes, it is, and it is in your, it is in your packages.
And I think I saw you might have sent that to to Bill Monagle.
Absolutely, we did.
All right, we'll just look for that. Anybody else have? We'll, we'll plan on that site visit. And. You know, should we meet at the office, Bill? I mean, where where would you suggest?
I I think we probably should come down into the site. I'll ask Ginger and and Steve to weigh in on that, but we could come in into the site, into the existing site. I think, right, kind of.
Yeah, meeting at the existing offices best. There's room to park, you know, twenty cows there if we need to.
Absolutely.
I know on the last time there were quite a few people showed up. I don't know whether that will occur again or not, but.
Yeah, I'll make sure we're ready for a lot of interest if if that's the case.
All right.
Is there anything in particular for protocol during that sidewalk that you want to see so we can be prepared?
Well, I think, yeah, I think seeing the the wetland areas that you're going to be. Having the boardwalk and roadway. You know, the location. The location of those cottages because they're going to be within the two fifty zone. You know, we're obviously, you know, we'd look at. As in any site review, we, you know, we look at where you're. Where you're proposing to do your expansions to the existing areas, but. You know, obviously, the bigger concern is that the areas within the shoreline, but. I mean, we have responsibility. Generally on on the site plan, just to make sure. You know, we see. Topography and. But I I'd say the major focus is going to be. These new cottages that you're building. And the dock and.
This is the the shore front stuff primarily, okay?
Just just to note, the existing road that Bill has referenced. Is obviously very overgrown. There's really only one access in and it actually crosses that wetland. So just people have to be prepared with mud boots and all sorts of things like that. It's a. It's not a walk in the park.
Yeah, well, we had a couple of dry weeks, which is good, but I remember we walked down it last couple of years ago. Okay. So I think we're we're done on this item. Thanks. For. Here and being patient with us with our Zoom technology.
You're you're not the first. I do a lot of these and you're not the first to have some challenges, so.
Yeah, well, we'll work on getting the. Getting it so people can. See the documents. I mean, I think it's good. We've got them on the website, so. Hopefully, it was helpful for anyone looking. All right.
Good, and we'll plan on the, we'll plan on November fourth at four P M.
All right, very good.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
So we'll go back to our. Agenda. Do we want to talk about our minutes from September? We have a motion to approve those minutes.
We approved the minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Want to see any? Corrections necessary? All in favor of accepting the minutes? All right. All right, motion by Ray, second by Larry. The business, I didn't get it on the agenda. I meant it meant to, and I I think I sent out to everybody. There was an amendment. Freedom of Information Act. In Maine that. Now requires certain. Other officials. Who. Have a course or self-course on the Freedom of Information Act. And it applies to the planning board. So I I sent out late today the link. You can do a self-study. Your own self-study. And I gave you a link, I think, to what that requires is a. Kind of an information sheet. I think Attorney General's Office put on out. I think it's frequently asked questions for Freedom of Information Act. And then there is a form. I did bring a few in. That you have to fill out, sign. And turn into the. Town office. That you have. Done this, the review of that. I think the major thing for us is to make sure. You know, we don't have. Uh, meetings that aren't noted. We give notice to. Three of us end up at Dunkin' Donuts and start talking about Camp Kippa. That's not proper. People request documents. I mean, that really falls more on the town office, but some of that, but. As I say, the legislature in there, infinite wisdom. Has decided that we. We also should be. Uh, knowledgeable of of the Freedom of Information Act, so. As I said, I think I brought in a few forms, but you can also download the form and. Think, I'm not sure when this became, and you have to do it too, Matt, right? So. This sort of a hundred and twenty day period that this is supposed to occur, and I'm not quite certain when this. Started Linda notified me after the last meeting. So, you know, I think if everyone could get this done, maybe in the next. Thirty sixty days, it would be good. It's not. You know, I I went through it. I mean, I've dealt with this before, but you know, it it doesn't take a great. Length of time and. As I say, a lot of it doesn't really apply to us, but.
If an issue is going to be made of that hundred and twenty days. We're all in trouble because it's a hundred and twenty days after the elected official takes oath of office. Bingo.
Well, but but. Yeah, but the amendment, it it's when that amendment went in. And if it was in the last legislative. Session. The bills, unless they're emergency legislation, don't go into effect immediately. There's a. So I I think we're well within it. Yeah, that that referred, I think, to the. Yeah, that that doesn't apply. I think for us, it applies when this law changed. And that reminds me, I don't think we ever did an election of new officers after. The town meeting. And we've been, I've kind of misplaced. My set of. The rules and regulations for the planning board. Don't think they're here.
Yeah, I left mine home.
I think if everyone's comfortable doing that, and actually, we don't have John and Mike, we could have just. Kind of make sure we have that election of officers so that it's. It it might be. I think what it says is that we're supposed to elect officers. At our next meeting after. The town meeting, but. But I think we usually wait until. The new. We have certain members who terms expire. And so we kind of wait.
Thank you. While while Libby looks for that, can you explain to me, because I don't know, how do your terms work and when did you guys?
So we got staggered terms. And we used to have a sheet that was given to us. So I think Ray's term. Rick and Larry. Their terms expired. Uh, last June. And and they're staggered so that.
And you're all obviously reappointed. July one or whatever, technically.
Yeah, and and. So they stagger the term so we all don't come up at once. And I know the. Think the Board of Selectmen is talking about. Establishing criteria for appointment to boards generally that. There is no kind of standard that they use, but that's. Sort of another matter. But we have a. Chair, vice chair. We have a secretary, but the secretary. Who's usually a member of the planning board, doesn't really. Has never done it, you know, we've real usually relied on somebody like, you know, Libby to do minutes and. Help with notices, but I mean, some of this stuff is.
Under planning board, have you found it?
Yeah, but I don't see it outlines the members. Three year terms. Where vacancy occurs. The planning board shall let the chairman and the secretary from among its members. The term shall be. One year, the election shall take place at the first meeting following the annual town meeting.
Or the third.
As I say, we've had, yeah, it's it's been a kind of a. Covid has certainly made it difficult for us to. Follow our normal procedures. So should we have? Can we deal with this tonight? Any nominations or you need the other members here for for? I don't think so. You guys are voting members tonight. I I, you know, I I hate to put it off another month because.
I know that Steve is. Chair.
I don't think you second nominees. I think you accept the nomination.
I'll accept the nomination for another year. All in favor? I'll abstain, obviously.
I make a motion to. Ray Simon's vice chair.
Uh, I will now at the moment. Okay, all in favor of Ray? Secretary?
I hope that we really nominate Larry as secretary and give him some duties.
Well, I think it's, you know, it's kind of helping being a liaison to Libby and. I think one of the things we may not have done yet is to get everybody a. New copy of Shoreland zoning. The approved. Does every anyone, we haven't done that. So we should work on that, the. We can maybe talk that next.
I've got a pretty good list going here.
The other thing I wanted to talk about is. Yeah, Larry, all in favor, Larry? All right, thank you. You know, so there are some things in the ordinances that, you know, maybe we're going to be looking at, some of it may come up with. After. Get the comp plan done, when we get it done, if we get it done. But some of the things on submissions. You know, I think we have to look at how many copies. What do we want applicants to give us? And so one of the questions, I guess, is. Uh, I try to get everything now electronically and. It's how many paper copies we should require. The applicant to give. Right now, I think it says nine. And. And I don't know how many board members. Are happy or. Are willing just to get an electronic copy. And how many want to get a paper copy so that we can. Sort of make sure that that's all done and we don't have any.
I think if it's an electronic copy in some reasonable size. Something that's a hundred and fifty pages. You know, do I submit a bill for my ink in paper?
Yeah.
It's a little bit unreasonable, I think.
Yeah.
Well, do you want to know what I was told Tuesday in the town office about this situation, which? I'm going to dovetail on what you brought up. We've got to do something about it, resolve this because I've had it up to here. Matt tried to do his dinus by sending us out an email at seven nineteen last Tuesday, giving us a heads up. But Tuesday, I caught shit in the town office again. And that's the second time. There's no need of it. We've got to resolve. How and when we get this information, which is where you opened the door a few minutes ago.
Well, probably before you got your ration, I got a ration also because I went in and said. You know, there was a copy for you and for Matt, that if we needed a copy, we could go request it. So I said. I need a copy and I believe Mike Seer. Also needs a copy. He's a mile and a half down the road, so I'd like two copies. So off the lead, he went to Matham and then in the meantime. Our town manager came in and she was less than enthused with that.
Well, here it is.
Be before I unloaded, I just said, thank you very much for your cooperation. I'll take my copies and leave.
I'm not going to loan, but I got a phone call. I was in Vegas on my trip about this. And I had arranged, don't rate it because I'm going to slip down the road. Here's my thing. Bottom line is you never had a problem getting these packets. I want my packet every month in paper. Can I make a request right to you? Because that was what I got told today this morning.
That's what I was going to chime in and say as well. I have not previously had an issue with you and I didn't know that you needed it in. Paper, so I've heard and I understand your request and I think probably at the request of the town office as well. We're, in my opinion. Because I handle the applicants coming through the door initially, will require. A minimum number of packets so that you all have them from the applicant. It is an applicant expense and requirement to submit them.
That's perfect.
Plain and simple, in the instances where they do not. And if someone has a fire pit, they'd like to move five feet, for example. I'm going to make a print off nine copies and bring them in. I'll do it. So from here on out, uh, we'll in a mo- in a moment establish. So from here on out, uh, we'll in a mo, in a moment establish how far in advance you'd like the information. But all of the copies of planning board applications are coming through me. So if you have a request, send it to me and I will make sure that it is fulfilled. How far in advance? Now, it was my responsibility, I would have liked to have sent it up to you Friday, didn't get a chance to on Tuesday mornings when you received the information about the packet. The applicant in the ordinance is required to send it no less than five days in advance of the meeting, which does not meet our.
Well, we know, we changed, that, that did get changed.
Okay.
That, that got changed and we've got to make sure we get that in the order. At the town meeting, there was an item. And so that, we may not have incorporated in that into our working ordinances. But that got extended back or, yes, extended back. So it's like the Tuesday, the applicant has to get their packet into us. The Tuesday of the week before the meeting.
Yeah, I noticed that.
And then, and then what Linda would like. Is that things get posted, at least on the website by Thursday, which I think also means try to get that.
Sure.
To the, to the board members by.
In, in a, in a previous life, in a previous planning board. We required that the applicant submit no later than two weeks prior to the meeting.
I am making notes on the ordinances myself to recommend changes to the board and, and so forth. I put ten days, fourteen days would certainly be applicable. I think that's fair. But instead of Tuesday, the week before the meeting, when it Thursday, I'm already confused. Ten days minimum, that's a Monday.
Yeah.
When it's due.
And these is good.
We gotta, we gotta, we're gonna have to make another, we're gonna have to make another amendment because that's what Linda and I came up with, was the Tuesday.
And that's, that's fine, it doesn't lie, it works.
As long as we, and I think we're just going to make sure, as I say, I don't think. We. Made a change, you know, to our ordinance copies to reflect that, that, that change, but.
I don't think we've had any applicants.
No one's, no one's complained about it, but somebody might, so we should.
So then if I understand the request of the board correctly, the applicant will submit both the digital if possible, but certainly. A sufficient number of paper copies on the Tuesday, the week before the planning board, and they'll be posted on Thursday, one week before the planning board meeting. And you all have either digital access or paper access at the same time the public does in one weekend advance.
That I think would work very nice.
Nice and clean.
Yeah.
I understand it. And as I'm increasing my capacity to be able to help out Monmouth, the goal is to relieve the town office at certain.
That's why I wanted to bring.
Things can come to me now and I'll handle them.
Thanks, well, yeah, I think. Yeah, man, escrows, we staying with escrows in town or is that going away?
Well, that's not for us. I mean, Linda and I have had some discussion and there's audit issues, but. We got, we gotta have more. I don't know how we, we have these money, monies for inspections that we're holding. That's really the purpose, I mean.
I think those would be considered separate.
And I, I think there may be a way at work around, a work around it somehow, but. I kind of asked Linda the other day, what are other towns doing? And, you know, so I think we're going to have more conversation about that. All right. I mean, I told her to clear out some, some escrows and, and that there's money we're holding. That we don't need to hold and. It's up to. Town office, up to Linda and the select board. On the accounts that are deficit, whether they want to pursue them. I never knew that there were any escrows that were. You know, in the deficit state until I got this report from, from Daniel. Matt's predecessor. Because Dave and Doreen, I think, took care of it or somebody in the town office took care of it.
Yeah.
So, um. But we're holding, you know, I think we have money from Willette. CMP.
Uh, Mike.
And, and the, uh, I think we have some money for the gravel pit. Because I, I think there was provisions in the approvals for periodic reviews of. You know, some standard that we are conditioned we impose. CMP, I mean, it's a pretty big fee. Because I don't know how long, you know, the, we probably have five miles of. Transmission line through, I mean.
Back in two thousand fourteen.
Yeah, but I think we took an escrow for when they built that little shed, uh, or not a shed, but.
Substation on South Monmouth Road.
No.
They added a little shed after the fact?
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think, I'm not sure why we need to have that money, but. Again, I think, I, I wanted to go back and look at. The initial transmission line and substation approval. To see really whether we need to keep that money or not. Most of the escrows really should be cleaned out pretty quickly and. You know, what we may want to do is if we take any money. We make a condition on approvals that. Any balance owed be paid before building permit is issued. And that once the building permit is issued, any escrow we're holding, that's not needed, be given back. Or applied to their building permit, whatever, whatever makes sense.
That's how it used to work in the old days.
Well, as I say, I mean, even, even while Dave Shaw was here, the system broke down a little bit. And, uh. I don't know. I mean, I know the auditors don't like us holding this money. Because. You know, any money you hold that's not really being carefully looked at. Is prone to. Misappropriation or loss or.
I think there's probably, and I've, it's on my list to do, which is growing, so hopefully you adjourn soon. My, on my list is to figure out what other communities are doing. I'm unfamiliar with escrow accounts, two communities I have also worked in, haven't typically done it. On things like the transmission line, I understand why you'd want to have that. I think maybe the typical mechanism might be bonding of some kind. That has, you know, or an insurance that has a shelf life that you could call. But even if an escrow account were considered for the few major developments that required it, that would be one thing. But I think the town office, and I have on my list to review the deficit, escrow deficit list. You know, it's people that put in fifty dollars and have eighteen dollars left over or five dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
Just clean them out, just get rid of all of them.
Yeah.
Pay them out or write it off.
You know, and it may be on that CMP one. The transmission line and the station is that once those, the work was completed. That's when the inspection should have been done and that clear, I don't know why we would continue to hold money. For that, it's not like. Say a silt pond or something that.
Okay.
We need to check on.
I get it. For example, I, I did a subdivision in two thousand ten and it was a thousand dollars, I think, for it. And then at the time, Dave Shaw said, I can't, like, there was money still left there, but until another residence goes in there, so there's a shared drive. Till another residence go, goes in there, they won't name, give it a street name either until that happens. So they would need money for the street sign and, and et cetera. And then after that, then they could reimburse you what's leftovers, what, what I was told, so in a small kind of way.
And so the money's still there, as far as you know, that might be one of the ones on our list.
Hopefully you get a check coming soon.
Yeah.
Steve, Tuesday. When I picked up my copy and requested Larry's, which caused a lot of confusion and unhappiness. Linda said. To me, she says, uh, it costs money to produce these. Okay, I'm trying to save the town money. So my suggestion to her was, this represents about fifteen dollars and twenty cents, ten cents a copy. So just take that fifteen, twenty for the number of packets we have. And put it in against that escrow account for the applicant's escrow account. And I was informed right then and there, we no longer do escrow accounts.
Well, I think they're still there. I don't know that they've cleaned.
You may have some old ones are there.
Yeah.
But currently, a town of Monmouth is not doing.
Yeah.
Escrow accounts.
Well, it's in the ordinance. I, that's the problem. There's kind of, and so that's something, we'll, we'll work it out.
It's in our ordinance.
Well, I think there's something in our ordinance about an escrow.
I had an issue last month, but I called and I, in an email, I said, I would like a paper copy as well. And I called this morning, asked if it was there. I said, no, and then the lady looked into it and said, yeah, called me, said, you know, we'll have one ready for you.
You know, and I think part of this falls, I should have told them to, to get more paper copy.
Well, I mean, how many, okay, Matt's suggestion is the way to go. Cover all the bases.
We'll just do it.
That'll go that way to be.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ordinance says nine, and if we're going to stick to every element of the ordinance, this might as well be one of them. So it says nine, so that's what I'm going to ask for. Now, if I know Steve doesn't want a paper copy and I don't believe you do. And I send in eight, I'm not going to go track down a ninth one.
Yeah.
But it sounds like almost exclusively, everybody else wants a paper one. Is that, is that true?
Because the reason is, nice to have you. Because I got my nails and then when we do the site visit, this is coming with me.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Very hard to take that with you, try to ignore.
Yeah, I'll probably try it, but yeah, you're right.
I mean, if it's just a few pages, I don't mind printing it up or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, a couple, a couple, three page, four pages, something like that. Double sided, it doesn't take any time at all, but.
Yeah, right. Well, ultimately, you know, I'd like to save you guys from using your own resources. You're obviously here volunteering, so there's no need to print it up additional.
And that's why you get that check every twice a, twice a year.
Wow, thing is, I'm about ready to ask for an increase.
You don't know how close I came after Linda told me that it was to save money for the town. How close I came to telling her, it's not up to the board members to take their time and the expense of doing all of this.
I think we all agree on that.
Turned around and walked around away and just said, I've had enough of this bullshit and what?
We probably have that conversation because I don't. We don't care what it costs, we're here to do a job.
Sure.
Okay, I spent five years in a board of selectmen, I know how it works.
Oh, it's like.
And when it comes down to staffing, we used to do things with three people.
Well, yeah.
And a four, so there's another forty hours.
At this point, she's all we used to.
I, yeah, I understand that. You know, at the same time, definitely sympathetic to not necessarily.
I used to think Curtis was bad, she's a real.
Oh, that's right, we all agree. So that's, we'll go forward enforcing that, our order. I'll expect nine copies of everything submitted. Um, then again, if it's a three pager, you know, I'll throw up a copy and have them available for you.
A three pager is not a problem like. Mr. Grant said, okay, you know, within a reasonable amount of time, unless you've got a problem and you can't generate a copy for whatever reason. Then if, like you say, if you have a couple or it's, it's fine, but.
Well, I, um, will do my best to stay out of any other situations, but. Either you know there, but what I can say is that, you know, I appreciate everyone's patience. This is exactly month two, I think it's this week. Uh, the job for me, so we'll work it, we'll work out a routine that works first, planning board and myself.
I think we're, yeah, working in that direction.
Yeah.
Yeah, so as I said, I. We've got some conflict between the ordinances and what, you know, Linda's thinking is on the escrow, so we just got to work through that and see.
I'll tell you, my feeling right now is I definitely feel that we should have escrow accounts. Because if you don't, you're going to get the small projects, they're going to subsidize other projects. Working with a flat established fee, which is what she indicated to me.
Yeah.
Is not a good way of doing.
Not equitable, you know, I don't know how many, like, abudders, they're going to do the abutter mailing, so that will be good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, excuse me, literally on the heels of saying we should adhere to everything in the ordinance, I am going to ask every applicant if they're willing to do the abutter mailings.
Yeah.
In conjunction with us developing the letter, identifying, I'll confirm that all of the abutters are appropriate on their list. And then say, here's the approved list, here's the approved letter, send them out yourself.
Yeah.
And I need all those little green cards back.
Yeah.
So you know that they got sent.
What, what does it say in the ordinance? Who is, hopes to do the mailings?
The town. The town.
I know, so we're going to ask nicely.
Yeah.
Consider it. If the answer is no, hands are tied, I'll do it.
Yeah.
We'll do it, but then we'll increase the fees.
Yes, I'll be honest with you. Town to do it, like in my fees, I'd rather pay, have the town do it, because what if you do have them do it and they miss a couple of people?
That is, that's definitely one of the challenges that we have discussed.
See, that's, that's why the ordinance, you know, that's why when we did the comprehensive ordinance, we put that in that the town would do it. And of course, we had, we had staff to do it.
Yeah, yeah, understand.
These may change, I mean, who knows?
And again, you know, for so and so on a lake and it's three abutters, yeah, I can run up the green cards myself and mail them out.
Yeah.
If, if you look through the package here, I think this abutter, I think there are twenty-five or thirty of them.
Yeah.
At seven bucks a pop, you know, it's an hour worth of time or more.
Yeah.
Also a couple hundred bucks.
Matt, how? How much is this going to infringe on your time? If the applicant mails out a dozen abutters. And you've got to confirm that that was, you know, that, you've got to know which ones they had to begin with and then you're going to make sure that the mailing did go out to them. But if you've got an applicant that has an abutter considerably away and that and butter. Doesn't get along with the applicant whatsoever and the applicant forgets to mail into that, the butter, knowing that the abutters is going to be a pain. Right. On this project, you're going to have to make sure that this doesn't happen.
Yeah, exactly right. I would like to think that I can create some sort of efficient process to confirm they've all been sent and received. You know, it won't be easy the first time around or with such an extensive list, but I think ultimately you would still say, I look at the town time in the aggregate. And I kind of think what I'm sensing is that this role is going to fall to me. So I still think that creating an Excel spreadsheet and checklist to check them off will be more efficient for me than to mail them all out myself. The first one that it's missed, you can all tell me I'm wrong.
How many hours a week are you working for the town alone?
Twelve plus.
Twelve plus, yeah. Now, is that what you've asked to work or all you?
We shouldn't get into that, we don't want to.
Yeah.
Partly.
Oh, I mean, we're just putting more work on him.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Well, you know, I think the, the, it was established, the agreement was established twelve hours, thank you, but I'll answer this question. It was established at twelve hours. There are planning board weeks, like the end of last week and this week, where this is my focus and that going through the abutter list would be my focus. There are other weeks when, uh, you know, applicants, general site inspections and things are the focus. So far, it seems to be teetering on the edge of successful. Some weeks are busier than others, this wasn't, and therefore this got my attention.
Yeah.
The, you know, but, um.
I guess, going along with Rick's thinking, which I had brought up at the last meeting and, you know, it got dropped, okay? How much can we ask Matt to do in the allotted time, whether it's his choice or the town manager's choice, okay? You're going to have to say, hey, guys, timeout.
Sure, you're going to let us know.
Yep, exactly. And yeah, and I think that, you know, we'll find out, right? We're also getting, I acknowledge right up front, we're getting into the slower season. Um, you know, there'll be a couple of months here where it's, you know, we're way ahead of the game and we can spend time reviewing ordinances. Right now, it's a lot of. What can I do with my property? How do I, you know, go out and visit folks and answer some questions and? Uh, office hours have been continually busy, but we're getting into a better flow of that too, so I think we're catching up and, you know, I, again, I appreciate everyone's patience because. Sticking only to my experience here, I came in at a time where a lot was needed from a lot of folks and I think we've addressed quite a few of those. And now we're into a pretty good process where I'm handling the requests that I'm getting, so that'll.
So you're not doing inspections anymore, right? It's third party inspections in town now?
Primarily third party inspections. There are some that I'll take on if someone, you know, uh, has a very small porch and a set of stairs, that's something I can very easily. Handle. Um, I've been out to quite a few sites, getting to know the town pretty well. Um, I've been out to quite a few sites, getting to know the town pretty well because folks are asking, what can I do with this property? Please take a look at this.
Right.
Please address this concern. Uh, so I've been out plenty, but if you were to build a new home today, no, that would be for a third party inspector to complete. Just because of the frequency and timing of inspection.
Any public comment? No public comment. I, I turned off my computer, so I don't know the time, but.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Party time.
Very good. Now, Matt, are you going to take these plans back to the town office?
Can you get a copy of those for me?